Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. This time I call the meeting to order. We have a quorum. We have six members present this evening. If you will all stand, please, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Vice President Stauffer will be leading us in the pledge.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation, united in the soul, with liberty, justice, and moral law.
Thank you.
This time we'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any discussion of the agenda? Questions? All those in favor of approval of the agenda? Okay, we have six affirmative votes. I'm sorry. Yes, six. And the student member concurs. We'll move on to approval of the minutes.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, October 5th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Gassford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the closed session of Tuesday, October 5th? All those in favor of approval? So we have four affirmative votes. And any abstentions? Two. So we do have approval. Thank you.
I'll go ahead with the second motion, Mrs. Williams, for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, October 5th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Gassford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any additions or corrections for the business meeting minutes of October 5th? All those in favor of approval? Five. Any abstentions? An abstention. Student member concurs with the affirmative. We have that set of minutes approved. Thank you, Mr. Gassford.
You're welcome.
This is the portion of the meeting where we have public comment. We have two individuals who have signed up in advance. First name I have on my list is Brad Belmont. Mr. Belmont, would you come forward, please? Good evening.
Brad Belmont.
Good evening, Mr. Belmont. Mr. Belmont, you have five minutes in which to speak. Board Member Bickford is our timekeeper.
I've been here for about thirty seconds. I'll get it. When we do that, that's great. I come here today as a concerned citizen. I've got a nine-year-old son and a six-year-old daughter. And after the recent situation in Loudoun County recently, it got me thinking a little bit. And are you guys familiar with that situation in Loudoun County? Okay, so my question is, is there a policy in place, or is there one being discussed, to confront a similar situation in Washington County if it were to ever come up? If there is a policy, what is it? And the third is, I'd like to hear from each of you on your thoughts with transgender in bathrooms, locker rooms, or sporting teams for our school, our school teams in the county. And also how you feel about implementing policies on different pronouns for different kids. And that's really my questions, pretty quick. If you guys can pick whatever order you want to go in.
Well, Mr. Belmont, it's not the practice of the board to respond to public comment and engage in a back-and-forth. However, there is a section of our meeting that follows public comment where board members may respond to any comment made. So that's up to the individual board members. Okay? So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Next individual I have signed up is Neil Becker. Mr. Becker?
Neil Becker, 1-804-7, Oak Ridge Drive, Teachers Association, Hickers Town, Maryland. Good evening, President Williams, Superintendent Michael, board members, and staff. Tonight I share a few topics with you and all who are reviewing the meeting. I'm thankful that Washington County has opened to full in-person instruction countywide, and we also have a virtual program, an option for students who wish to maintain the distance and participate in virtual learning. If wearing a mask is the sacrifice we must make to facilitate in-person instruction, I'm willing to make it. Washington County Public Schools has been able to keep in-school transmission of the COVID virus very low, thanks to the daily commitment of students and staff. I'm hoping, and I'm actually confident, that that trend will continue. It's essential that Washington County Public Schools and the Board of Ed continue to partner with staff and families to keep students and staff safe in schools, on buses, and during events. As has been exemplified by the fall sports season and just last week's showcase of bands, with proper precautions, our students can enjoy the myriad of options available to them while enrolled in Washington County Public Schools. We're on the right track, and I thank all staff and students and families for their work to ensure we remain in person as much as possible. Second, I raise the realities of public education in a pandemic. Many, especially those without students currently enrolled in school, may not have a full grasp of a day in the life in school. Educators are juggling as they address the academic and social-emotional needs of the students and the families we serve. They're stretched thin as they address the trauma impacting students, the excessive state testing requirements, and the needs of students in quarantine. This is not a normal year, but educators and students are rising to the daily challenges. The relationships they are forging are valuable to the academic success that will follow. These issues are intensified because educators are dealing with significant staff shortages throughout the system, including food service, bus drivers, bus assistants, paraprofessionals, school nurses, substitute teachers, and yes, even teachers. As a result, bus drivers must pick up extra routes, impacting student travel time. Clerical staff, teachers, and administrators must do their traditional duties while also taking on the duties normally completed by school nursing staff. Due to the shortage of substitutes, teachers and paraprofessionals are forced to absorb students from other classes or to supervise classes without substitutes. Our educators are starved for time. The day doesn't get longer, the plate doesn't get bigger, but what the educators are doing continues to grow. The additional coverage impacts educators' planning time, forcing them to complete essential functions of their jobs outside their workday without appropriate compensation. The outdated language in the negotiated agreement does permit some teachers, not all, but some teachers, to request compensation, and those who are eligible for compensation may request $11.50 an hour. $11.50. That's below the Maryland minimum wage of $11.75. We can do better. The public school system can do better than $11.50. But they don't own that alone. To the families served by Washington County Public Schools, thank you for your patience and your continued partnership as WCPS navigates these challenging times. We are moving forward and we are making progress. To the county commissioners, back to that $11.50 an hour, I sincerely hope the county commissioners are paying attention to the funding and staffing crises. While they have bragged about funding Washington County Public School with the legal minimum known as maintenance of effort, the commissioners have banked millions in surplus revenues and did not utilize ARP funds to assist Washington County Public Schools' efforts to reopen during the pandemic. A vehicle can run with deferred maintenance and bald tires for only so long before it experiences a catastrophic event.
That's time.
The staffing shortage and potential catastrophic event is on the horizon. To the commissioners, act now and stabilize the foundation of the county by appropriately funding Washington County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public comment?
My name is Diane Glaze. I am a resident of Washington County. And this is a press release from today. Today, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, and the Children's Hospital Association, together representing more than 77,000 physician members and more than 200 children's hospitals, declared a national state of emergency in child and adolescent mental health and are calling on policymakers to join them. The COVID-19 pandemic has taken a serious toll on children's mental health as young people continue to face physical isolation, ongoing uncertainty, fear, and grief. Even before the pandemic, mental health challenges facing children were of great concern, and COVID-19 has only exacerbated them. Children's mental health is suffering. Young people have endured so much throughout this pandemic, and while much of the attention is often placed on its physical health consequences, we cannot overlook the escalating mental health crisis facing our patients. Today's declaration is an urgent call to policymakers at all levels of government. We must treat this mental health crisis like the emergency it is. The numbers paint an alarming picture. Between March and October 2020, the percentage of emergency department visits for children with mental health emergencies rose by 24% for children ages 5 to 11, and 31% for children ages 12 to 17. There was also more than 50% increase in suspected suicide attempt emergency department visits among girls ages 12 to 17 in early 2021 as compared to the same period in 2019. Additionally, many young people have been impacted by loss of a loved one. Recent data show that more than 140,000 U.S. children have experienced the death of a primary or secondary caregiver during the COVID-19 pandemic, with children of color disproportionately impacted. We were concerned about children's emotional and behavioral health even before the pandemic. The ongoing public health emergency has made a bad situation worse. We are caring for young people with soaring rates of depression, anxiety, trauma, loneliness, and suicidality that will have lasting impacts on them, their families, their communities, and all of our futures. We cannot sit idly by. This is a national emergency, and the time for swift and deliberate action is now. Amy Wimpy Knight, president of CHA, added, "We are facing a significant national mental health crisis in our children and teens, which requires urgent action." In the first six months of this year, children's hospitals across the country reported a shocking 45% increase in the number of self-injury and suicide cases in 5- to 17-year-olds compared to the same period in 2019. Together with the AAP and the AACAP, we are sounding the alarm on this mental health emergency. In the declaration, the groups emphasize the disproportionate toll on young people in communities of color and how the ongoing struggle for racial justice is inextricably tied to the worsening mental health crisis. Children and families across our country have experienced enormous adversity and disruption. The inequities that result from structural racism have contributed to disproportionate impacts on children from communities of color, the group stated in the declaration. The organizations are urging policymakers to take several actions, such as increasing federal funding to ensure all families can access mental health services, improving access to telemedicine, supporting effective models of school-based mental health care, accelerating integration of mental health care and primary care pediatrics, strengthening efforts to reduce the risk of suicide in children and adolescents, and addressing workforce challenges and shortages so that children can access mental health services no matter where they live. It's an emergency. You all know it's an emergency. The masks are adversely affecting children physically. They are cutting off their oxygen supply. They are affecting them neurologically for the rest of their lives. The decisions that you all make will affect children physically and mentally for the rest of their lives. I urge you, please, to put some policies in place to fight back against mask mandates for children. Children have a 99.997% survival rate from COVID. They don't need to be masked. They don't need to be six feet apart. They don't need barriers, and they don't need to be isolated. This mental health crisis needs to be addressed now. Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Hi. My name's Ryan Ballard.
I'm sorry, again, please.
Ryan Ballard.
Ballard.
B-A-L-L-A-R-D.
Thank you.
No problem. With the muzzle on, it gets muffled. Anyway, just wanted to bring up a pop culture reference for you guys. The Avengers, all right? So we're talking about Thanos. Thanos, big purple guy, and his mission was to go around the galaxy, and he would conquer worlds. And he conquered the worlds by eliminating half of the cultures that were on that world. And eventually, he got a hold of an Infinity Gauntlet, snapped his fingers. Half of the universe is gone. Now, he's doing this all under the guise that he is doing good, because in theory, the worlds were overpopulated. There was not enough food for people. There was not enough, you know, not enough resources to keep it going. Everything was going to collapse. That was in his brain. What ended up happening, when he snapped his fingers, after five years, everything had crumbled. Everybody had collapsed. Nobody was doing well, because they didn't have that choice. He thought he was doing great, but it turns out he was the villain the whole time, even though he didn't see himself as the villain. So just to put that in a point of reference here, the first day of school, my wife tested positive for COVID. Turned out, I had it a day or so before that. My son, who's nine and special needs, ended up being out of school for the next 20 days. So he wasn't in the virtual program last year. We had to homeschool him, because doing the whole Zoom thing, it just doesn't work for that kid. He just, he can't focus on it. He can't, he can't, he can't do it. So we homeschooled him. But he was really excited to go back to school and see his friends this year. And so after those 20 days, that joy waned very quickly. And now, Wednesday, last Wednesday, happened. And yesterday, 5:00 in the evening, I got a call from a young lady, and if that young lady's on the staff somewhere, I don't know who she was, I said some unkind things. And I said they weren't directed at her. It was really directed as the board as a general, because I know she didn't make those decisions that were putting my son out of school. So he was out of school again for another week, even though he's had COVID. We didn't test him, because you shouldn't have to test a child like that unless it's absolutely necessary. It was really obvious that we all had the same type of symptoms. It was just minor allergy stuff. He actually had it a lot less than anybody else in the family. But anyway, so then we get a call again today. So he's not in school for the rest of this week because of being eating near somebody last week. And now we get a call again today. And now we can't go back to school for next week, because he sat next to somebody else in the cafeteria today. The kid's not going to get sick. He's already had it. We shouldn't have to show proof that he had it, because why would you want to? I don't have to show proof that my kid had chickenpox. I don't have to show proof that he had the regular flu, which doesn't exist anymore. But, you know, we don't have to show those things. The school system should accept our, hey, he's good. He's already had this, and he should be treated as if he's a vaccinated student at this point. And he should be allowed to go back to school. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense that we're kicking him out of school again. I mean, we should homeschool him. It makes more sense at this point, because there's been nine weeks of school. He's gone to less than half of that. How is that kid going to survive? How is he going to learn? He's not going to. And we have to do something about that. So please, don't be Thanos. I know you think you're doing the right thing by kicking these kids out of school for their long periods of time. Don't do that. Let them show some symptoms, because these kids are going to rock right back from that. But they're not going to get back from the mental issues that they're hitting because of this. We got to save them, and it starts now. We got to save them. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Is there anyone else? Do you have a mask?
I do.
Would you put it on, please? Thank you.
Ms. Robyn Jonett, can you hear me through the mask?
I caught Robyn. What's the last name, please?
Yeah, I'm trying. My name is Robyn Jonett. I live at 21605 Old Trolley Lane in Boonsboro, Maryland. We recently moved to Washington County from Montgomery County in the spring. As you know, Montgomery County is one of the most locked-down counties in the state, and I fear in the country, when it comes to forced COVID mandates. Most recently, one of the mandates that the school system was implementing pushed me to resign my position at MCPS. I'm a veteran SLP who has worked 19 of my 28 years in that system. I began seeing what the mandates, all of them, were doing to the children and teenagers in that school. And what I saw was that MCPS was going down the wrong road. So I took a position at WCPS. There were no mandates here. A week later, forced masks were voted in for all staff and students in the schools. I immediately wrote to the superintendent, and thank you for responding right away. I appreciate it. And it seemed that the mandates were there, so we didn't have to quarantine if the students or staff came in contact with someone with COVID. It would be short-lived. However, I saw quarantining of staff and students based on the contact, and now it's flip-flopping again. There are so many mixed messages here as to why the mandates and even how to follow them. There is no rhyme or reason. There seems to be no rules. So tonight, I'm here to talk about my position and what I will be doing. Number one, professionally, I'm a speech pathologist, as I said before. I help people learn how to talk, swallow, and gain control over their articulators to speak. Have you ever tried speech therapy when your client's mouth is covered? I know you have the perfect solution for that, and we have those nice little window masks that we use. But have you ever tried the window masks? When I use them and I ask them to follow me, their lips are strapped to that window. They cannot move their mouths the way that I need to move them, because the mask is so tight against their mouths. And then we have the face shields. So I've tried that, too. Same issue. So if I'm teaching somebody oral mortar movements, I can't move my mouth. And then, even if I could, I can't see my client's mouth to see how they're moving their mouth. So how do you expect me to do therapy with these children? Second is personally. Why are we using the masks? Why the mandates? You all know the death rates they were just talked about here tonight. The vaccines are a failure, as they don't stop the spread of COVID at all, and the side effects are worse, much worse, than the side effects of COVID itself for the children. I'm sure many of you, the parents here tonight, have come up here and talked about the death rates in children and in the age groups that are most, most of our teachers are in. And the most recent numbers, I'll just say the zero to the 19 age group, the death rate is .0027. So when they say that you have a better chance of being struck by lightning, our kids do have a better chance of being struck by lightning than dying from COVID. And let that sink in for one second. We're asking our children to mask their faces for this risk. Is it a risk? On top of this, no one is using the masks the way they're intended to be used. I have dealt with highly infectious diseases in the hospitals. You don't touch your face when you go in the room. You use protocol. You suit up, you mask up, you derote before you come out, and you take your gloves off, and you wrap them up in each one, and you place them in those little red bins. Where are our red bins? If this is so infectious, where are our bins? If you come into the schools, I know the superintendents are coming into the schools on the next week, watch the kids. They don't have their masks on. They go up, they go down, they go down to sneeze in their hands. The hands touch the desk. They touch the next kid. They're not using the masks appropriately. And if you ever look inside of those masks, they are covered with filth, grime, some food. I've seen food in there. And we're asking our kids to put these masks on all day and breathe through them. And for me, as a professional, I would never, ever ask my client to put on something like that. That's a liability. But yet, we're asking our kids to breathe through these masks every day. And I couldn't sleep at night if I had to do that. In the history of mankind, we have not been able to stop a virus. We have the studies, the masks don't work. We have the studies, kind of, on the vaccines. They're not working, and they don't stop the spread either. We have no studies on social distancing, because God knows where that came from. What we have is a virus that is not killing our kids. The people can get well from. I've had it. My husband's had it, and my son's had it. We've been fine. I signed on to this job with no mandates, and my contract at the time said no mandates. We should all be taking a stand together, and I will take that stand. I will be the first one to walk into school tomorrow without my mask, and I will suffer the consequences. We can watch football stadiums, I have 200,000 fans, sit there with no masks, and our children have to go to school with a filthy mask on. I hope that lawsuits fall. I hope that we fall, the rest of the country, and we all stand up to all these mandates. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? No one else? Thank you. This time we'll have board member response to public comment. Mr. Belmont, you've had some questions with regard to policies. Our chief legal counsel, Mrs. Ram, is in the rear. Mrs. Ram, would you put your hand up, please? If you would like to go speak with her, she can help you with policies that you're asking Anything else? Mr. Gupta?
Yeah, really quickly with the mask mandate. I've said this a couple of times, but it's mandated by the state. It's not really up to us as a Board of Education to decide that. We're forced to enforce it by the state. But with mental health, it's so important with mental health. I know that a lot of people talk about that, and I really believe in mental health. When I was a student, when I'm a student, I'm talking with other students, they're telling me that mental health is so important, and I really believe that. I'm imploring the Board of Education to do more about mental health, and I definitely plan to do more about mental health. And to anybody, all of the parents and all of the students, if there are any students listening at home, I'm telling you right now that Washington County gives three free counseling, I believe, three free counseling sessions to any student. I believe, three free counseling sessions to any student. So I encourage you to go talk to your counselor about that. Or if you're a parent and your, and your student is having problems with mental health, then I encourage you to go talk to your counselor about that because mental health is so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Excuse me, I'm sorry. We've had public comment. At this time, we'll move to old business. There's no further comment. We have no old business to conduct, so we'll move to new business. The first item under consideration is the consent agenda. Mr. Scott Bagdahl, supervisor of purchasing, presenting. Good evening, Mr. Bagdahl.
Good evening. Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have four items for your review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing review committee and are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bagdahl. Is there a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards and procurements for custodial supplies and equipment and food service supplies and equipment to Weiss Brothers at the unit prices listed. Technology education supplies and equipment to Amtech Company, Inc., at a cost of $907,029. Security equipment and service renewal to Atlantic Security System at the unit prices listed, and bulk motor oil and fluids renewal to Holtzman Oil Corporation at the unit prices listed.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second? Mr. Bigford's motion. Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions? Any discussion?
I do have a question with regard to number one on the consent agenda. It says this contract is an open requirement contract, meaning items may be added and/or deleted from the market basket of items throughout the life of this contract. So can you tell me what the process is? Who, who is it that has the authority to make the decisions regarding changes? Is there a process?
There, yeah. So for food service, Mr. Embley would, you know, reach out and he may find a product, either a new product that, that is, that would replace something that we currently have. You know, that maybe there's a, a new innovation or just a new style of product, and he may want to add that. Or a lot of times, products will get deleted or discontinued. So, you know, they may not, no longer carry something, so we would find an alternative product that would kind of serve the same purpose. He would then, you know, reach out to Weiss Brothers, ask them to reach out to their manufacturer to get a, a bid price on that, and then they would reach back out and let us know what that price would be, and we would add it to the, to the working list we have. And same thing for, for custodial products.
So it would be the head of the department?
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're voting to approve. The motion is read by Mr. Bigford with regard to the consent agenda for this evening. All those in favor? All right, we have six affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Bagdahl. Our second agenda item is MAB, which is the Maryland Association Boards of Education, the organization of which we are a member, is asking for names to be sent to the organization for consideration for membership on various standing committees. So at this time, I'm recommending the following board members for the following committees. For budget, Peter Bigford. For legislative, Stan Stauffer, with the alternate being Darrell Evans. Conference program, Linda Murray and Melissa Williams. The federal relations network, Darrell Evans. Policies and procedures, Melissa Williams. Resolutions, we have no one to put forth as a member. I will be serving as chair of this committee at the request of the President Jenny McGraw. And for the MAB awards committee, we have Dr. April Zentmeyer. So those are the names of the individuals who have volunteered to serve. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve these self-nominations for the MAB committee assignments as presented. For resolutions? Any additions?
Mrs. Williams, I move to the approval of the self-nominations for MAB committee assignments as presented by the president, by President Williams, and the sending of the board endorsement of those nominations to MAB.
All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Thank you. So that's Gessford on the motion, Bigford on the second. Any discussion? Any questions? Now we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Okay, we have six affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Thank you. Mrs. Chekovik will send a letter to MAB on the board's behalf, and we will meet the deadline, which I believe is tomorrow, right? Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll move now to our next item of new business, which is the first reading of policy JHG, Student Athletes' Preseason Practice Heat Acclimatization Guidelines. Thank you. We have Chief Legal Counsel, Mrs. Ram, presenting.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. The Policy Committee has been conducting a comprehensive review through an equity lens of the student section of the Board Education, Board of Education's policy manual. The committee conducted a review of policy JHG as public work session, session on August 31st and September 28th of this year. The major change to that policy is to include not only student athletes, but also members of the marching band, who also participate in activities in warm to hot weather. Additional changes include placing the policy in the correct format and striking language that will be placed in an accompanying administrative regulation. The committee is requesting that the Board of Education approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JHG at this time.
Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JHG entitled Student Athletes' Preseason Practice Heat Acclimatization Guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Questions for either Mr. Bigford, the chair of the committee, or Mrs. Ram? Any discussion?
So the public knows, this is something that this board has to do because it was a result of a law passed by the state legislature several years ago after a heat-related death of an athlete here in Maryland. I, I don't remember where, but this, what we're doing with this policy is just reformatting it, just cleaning up some language. It's not really a change from what it's been in the past. In fact, you may read in the newspaper that some of our policies are, are changes, and they're really not. The newspaper is really misleading with that. We're just cleaning things up and putting it, putting it a little better language, but many of these changes or these policy changes, as we'll call them, do not really change anything in practice or anything. So again, this is something the state legislature mandated and so forth, and having been a former coach for 27 years, we've come a long way in managing heat-related incidents. Back in the old days, when I was a student athlete, of water and salt tablets. And if you didn't do the drill right, you didn't get a water break till you got it right. Things have changed a lot in the last, well, 60-some years. So just wanted everybody to know that.
Thank you. Anything else? We'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JHG entitled Student Athletes' Preseason Practice Heat Acclimatization Guidelines. All those in favor? We have six affirmative, and the student member concurs. Motion carries. And now it's time for the superintendent's report. So Dr. Michael, to you.
Hi, thank you, Mrs. Williams, members of the board. Tonight, as I mentioned in the first board meeting in October, there's a lot of national weeks and months for October, and we're going to continue to recognize some of those. So the first one is Recognition of Character Counts Week, which is October 18th through the 22nd. Our code of conduct is built on the six pillars, pillars of character counts. And I'd like to ask Dr. Pugh if she would just share a proclamation this evening. Dr. Pugh?
Good evening. The proclamation tonight reads, "Whereas young people will be the stewards of our communities, nation, and world in critical times, and whereas the present and future well-being of our society requires an involved, caring citizenry with good character, and whereas the public good benefits when young people learn that good character counts in personal relationships, in school, and in the workplace, and whereas conscientious efforts must be made by youth-influencing institutions and individuals to help young people develop the essential traits and characteristics that comprise good character. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the week of October 18th through the 22nd of 2021 be designated Character Counts Week in Washington County Public Schools, presented this 19th day of October 2021."
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pugh. Another recognition is this week is School Bus Safety Week. I know that staff will be doing a review of our buses coming up, I think midweek, Wednesday, Thursday of this week. They'll begin for five days. So so grateful to our bus drivers, our bus assistants, our crossing guards, our mechanics, the office staff. And at this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Brian Johnson, supervisor of transportation, to share a little bit about transportation.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to talk a little bit about National School Bus Safety Week. I want to share with you that the Washington County Public School System transports around 19,500 students. We utilize 171 school buses to and from school each day. Over the course of a regular school year, our buses travel over 3 million miles. These miles are driven on hot days, cold days, windy days, stormy days, and everything in between. We travel our city roads, and we travel our rural roads, and we travel our highways. Importantly, due to the skill and dedication of our school bus drivers, including contractors, crossing guards, attendants, maintenance department, and transportation office staff, we travel these miles with our most precious cargo, and we do it safely. Each year, the third week of October is recognized as National School Bus Safety Week. It's a time to remind the community that we all play a role in school bus safety. This year, the focus is on the danger zone, which is the 10-foot area all around the bus. Parents, this is an excellent opportunity to remind your children to take three important steps for the danger zone. One, to remind your children to arrive about five minutes early to the bus, so they're not rushed. Second, teach them to stay at least three giant steps clear of the bus until it comes to a complete stop and the doors are open, which activate the red lights. Finally, we recommend students should always pay close attention to the bus driver when boarding and exiting the bus. To our motoring public, remember that is illegal to pass a school bus with its red lights flashing and stop arm extended. Each year, in late April, one day is selected for school bus drivers to take a survey statewide of vehicles that illegally passed our stop arm. Prior to COVID, the last time this survey was taken, the state of Maryland recorded over 3,000 instances of motorists illegally passing the stop arm during one day. Passing a stop arm is illegal, but most important, it places our children in danger. We all have a responsibility to do our part by observing safe driving practices and stopping for the school bus. To conclude my brief comments, I would like to quote the final paragraph from Governor Hogan's proclamation for National School Bus Safety Week where he said, "Maryland is pleased to join the nation in recognizing, recognizing school bus safety in all 23 counties, Baltimore City and the seed school, as well as the diligence that our school bus drivers and attendants do to transport our children to in-person learning and keeping our Maryland students safe every day." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our third and last recognition tonight, American Safe Schools Week. And I've asked Mr. Pugh to come forward. There's a great deal beyond the school bus and school bus safety that we do every day to try to keep our children safe and our staff safe and our community safe. And Mr. Pugh, if you'd share.
Thank you, Dr. Michael, members of the board. The week of October 18th through the 24th marks Safe Schools Week. In Washington County, our school safety program has grown significantly over the last 15 years under the leadership of Mr. Steve Ganley, safety and risk manager. School safety preparedness ranges from extensive camera and keycard access systems to individualized school safety committees and school safety plans that have been reviewed and approved by the Maryland Center for School Safety. When the state mandated emergency drills were put into place, WCPS did not have to make any changes because we were already exceeding what were the requirements at the time. Washington County focuses on, focuses on student and staff safety at all times. School safety also includes protecting the well-being of students and staff, improving discipline, and increasing student attendance through teamwork that includes school staff, student services, counselors, and support staff. A huge part of this program is also our well-established relationships with the Washington County Sheriff's Department and the Haynerstown Police Department through our school resource officer program and overall logistical support. We'd be remiss if we didn't also thank the county's emergency management program, as well as state and municipal police and fire departments for their support and assistance. Mr. Ganley often states that safety is not convenient, meaning proper safety programs should provide hurdles and obstacles that make us think every day. And a reminder for our community that every member of the community plays a part in creating a school, say, a safe school environment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pugh. As we continue the report, every year, staff needs to report to the board our progress on our local Every Student Succeed Act. There's a consolidated plan. Many people, long ago, this was the master plan. I know Dr. Pugh worked on this for a number of years and jokingly said it's a consolidated plan. I think that things continue to grow. I think we're about 500 pages at this point of state requirements. And Dr. Willough tonight is just going to share a brief update regarding that plan.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. I am here tonight to talk to you a little bit about our ESSA plan. A little background, this is actually the third plan that we've submitted to the state. Earlier in the summer, we worked very closely and submitted the reopening plan, and then we also turned in a plan for the ARPSER III funding. So some of this is an overlap based on what we've already submitted, and there is, the stakeholder groups were very similar with all three just due to the timing this year. The ESSA plan came out in 2019, as Dr. Michael shared, this replaced the master plan. We are waiting to see what's going to happen because here in the spring, we're anticipating a blueprint plan that could potentially replace the ESSA plan. There are several components to the local ESSA plan, and that includes the executive summary, our needs assessment, our two primary areas of focus, along with our CSI and TSI schools, federal-state grant applications, which typically include Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. We also mentioned gifted and talented, as required by COMAR, and our teacher induction and mentoring program are also included in our consolidated plan. As with every year, we're required to look at student-specific groups. And as always, we look at our special education subgroup and our EL subgroup. But this year, in addition, as what we outlined in our reopening plan and our ARPSER III plan, we're also looking at groups that are failing to meet adequate progress on state Equity. We've heard a lot of different definitions on equity. For us, educational equity means that all students have access to opportunities required throughout their educational career to maximize academic success and social-emotional well-being. Academic success means putting systems in place to ensure that every child has an opportunity to maximize his or her progress. A simple way of looking at this might be an IEP plan or a 504 plan. But as we look, and as all three plans outline, for students But as we look, and as all three plans outline, for students that are behind, we've come up with a model for supplemental instruction. And our supplemental instruction opportunities will occur during the day and possibly before and after school. And that includes additional time, small group tutoring, and some of the things that we're doing as part of our great initial instruction that I've highlighted here before in past presentations. What are our two primary areas of focus? The primary areas of focus still remain student achievement in reading and writing, and achievement in math. These are areas where, across the board, we have an opportunity to improve outcomes for all students. And this is especially important as we come out of our virtual plan, blended learning plan from last year, and we are back in person for this year. But there are other areas of focus that are included in our ESSA Plan. Access to and completion of a well-rounded curriculum, ensuring that students have access to computer science, computational thinking, music, and that's specifically outlined in part of our Title IV. We also support PBIS training and PBIS programs at our elementary and middle schools. Web and Link are our transition programs that we have in place to help students as they come into sixth grade and as they come into ninth grade. Our social-emotional learning components on building relationships, restorative practices, trauma-informed practices, again, professional development for working with different students, with challenges that come from the community or the home, and mental health services. We've had mental health services in Washington County prior to the pandemic. We've expanded on those using our Title IV funds. And students do have access to mental health services provided with parent permission, and any student that is in need of that should reach out, or a parent may reach out to the school counselor, and the school counselor would be able to provide additional information. And a little bit, but not so much, we do have some technology needs in our ESSA Plan as well. Questions for me?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Willow. Word members, earlier today, you approved the procurement, a pretty sizable procurement for Washington County Technical High School, as you're well aware. And we're hoping December 21st to bring forward the bids to renovate a large portion of the downstairs of Washington County Technical High School. So we're going to do significant improvements to the electrical construction component, the carpentry component, collision repair, auto technology, as well as add a diesel program, which will actually be in a new building. So in all those pieces, part of what you did tonight was approve thirty-five simulators. We brought you a very, very simple simulator over here. This is one that we already have. I would say this is on the low end of what was approved this evening. But some of these are very high-tech simulators, and we wanted to go ahead and get those ordered, so we appreciate your approval tonight. And we do have a picture, kind of a cutaway car video that Wayne Violet provided for us today, and I just wanted to have you a chance to see that. This is the type of thing that you just approved. Like I said, there's about thirty-five of these, different sizes and shapes, and for diesel, auto mechanics, all types of things. But it gives you a little bit of an idea of how we can manipulate the simulator for the instruction of students. So with that, we'll just roll this short video.
I'd like to introduce you to the Megatech Trainer, Clip Car Trainer, that we recently acquired for the automotive and the transportation technology cluster. So trainers like this one are hugely valuable to students because we can connect what we teach in the curriculum, the theory behind how these systems work, and we can have the students have hands-on instruction on a newer model vehicle, current with today's current technology. And what makes this particular trainer incredible is that it is a car, it is a cutaway, but it is still fully functional without the risk of damaging a privately-owned or one of our dealership-owned vehicles. So this trainer is designed that students do not have to go in and manually open up wiring harnesses or disturb sensors. Everything is done through an electronic black box where faults are controlled by the teacher. Students go through a breakout box, which is here on the side of the vehicle, where they can use a DVO-M, follow published diagnostic routines, trouble charts, and find the problems with the vehicle in a real-world application.
Just a little idea of the type of thing beyond, like I said, more simplistic cutaway, still a very valuable tool, but this is the type of simulators that you approved this evening. And I think you're going to be very, very excited about the new programs at Tech High and the upgrade to those programs. Again, automotive, we're looking at alternative energy, alternative sources of, you know, vehicles, autonomous cars. And our diesel program is going to be the best in the state of Maryland and beyond. So we're really excited about what we purchased. And, you know, from what we're hearing, we're going to be beyond cutting-edge here on probably the East Coast with some of these programs. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Prue back to the table, and he'll kind of wrap us up. Last week, made a decision to roll out new quarantining protocols based on the history of what we're seeing as far as the percentage of well students that were being quarantined, trying to reduce that number a little further. And I'd just like for Mr. Prue to review those, as well as some other information this evening. So, Mr. Prue?
Thank you again, Dr. Michael, members of the board. I think, you know, as we begin and look at this, I think what we're going to share with you tonight is sort of a high-level approach of what is sort of, say, the same with our contact tracing and quarantining program? What are some of the new items within our program? There's a lot of detail that sort of lives underneath the surface that the COVID response team will continue to assist families with, depending on their individual particular situation, to try to explain that probably in a PowerPoint. I know you all want to go to bed at some point tonight, so I think that would be difficult and timely. But I think it's also worth sharing that the program that we developed and we distributed on Thursday of last week is consistent with what several other Maryland counties to our east have introduced over the last several weeks. So to begin, the goals of the program, again, maintaining a safe and healthy learning environment for all of our students and for our staff that are working within that environment. Keeping healthy students and staff in school, that was the key message of really trying to reduce quarantines and keeping our healthy students in the classroom, and keeping unwell students and staff at home, just as we should always, when you are sick, you should stay home to prevent the spread of whether it's COVID-19 or anything else, to protect the health of others. What stays the same is that we are continuing to provide a very thorough contact tracing process, reviewing all areas of interaction between students and staff, depending on whether it's classroom, bus, cafeteria, other extracurricular activities, providing notification of close contacts. So in this program, we're still going to notify families that their child is a close contact, someone who has been identified as being positive with COVID-19. Anyone with COVID-19 symptoms must stay home. That's consistent with guidelines and recommendations, and again, to protect the overall learning environment. What really is different is that individuals who have been identified without symptoms are able to stay in the school as long as they can wear a mask consistently in all settings for fourteen days. The fourteen days is really is the gold standard benchmark of quarantine from CDC, from Maryland Department of Health, and does protect that if someone does become infected with COVID-19 during that period, even as a close contact, they are providing a layer of protection by wearing a mask during all those times. So that is the high-level approach of what really has changed. Again, symptomatic students, students that are ill, are going home, and staff, as they should. Well students are able to stay in the classroom environment and continue to participate in all activities throughout the school day, including extracurriculars and athletics.
Provided their masks.
Provided their masks.
Right, so one of the challenges we have, as we've identified close contacts, if a parent chooses to allow those students to return, under certain circumstances, the child will need to be masked. So where we've had students not masked during activities for gym, recess, athletics, if they're one of these students that are identified as a close contact, in order to return and participate in those activities, they then would have to be masked because they've been identified as a close contact. So we're trying to give parents as much choice as possible. They could choose to have their child stay home and go through the quarantine period. They could stay home and go through the five-day later testing, return after seven requirements, those types of things. But in order to return immediately or choose not even to leave, based on being non-symptomatic, they would have to be masked as being identified as a close contact. Are there's any questions for Mr. Prue about that? I mean, I know there's a lot of variance in that. Again, this is all about masked, properly masked students. And there are times of days when children aren't masked and would be actually quarantined, and that would not be an option of the parent.
So I do have a couple of questions about this. So when I was reading through this, and I don't have it in front of me, so forgive me if I misquote something, and please correct me if I do, when I was reading this, it really seemed like the main population of students that this would truly benefit would be those that are vaccinated because, for the most part, the kids that are in classrooms should not have to vaccinate, or I'm sorry, quarantine, because they should all be wearing their masks anyway. And so it seems like in the cafeteria, in the gym, on the playing field, and on the bus is really where we're supposed to be seeing all the quarantines anyway. So it seems to me like really the only population that this would be helping would be the vaccinated population. Is that an error to say that, or?
I think it is. Currently, a vaccinated student does not have to quarantine. So with this change, all students have the option, as long as they remain healthy and don't have symptoms, they can remain in the classroom provided they're masked at the time of their exposure. So this actually benefits unvaccinated students more than vaccinated students.
Okay, that makes me happy then. And I know, and I mean, it's, as far as I know, I don't remember the exact regulation, but I think MDH says that if you exhibited any symptoms long before COVID, that you had to stay home anyway. I don't know exactly how it's stated, but there's something in there for that. You know, so I guess my next question is, for these kids that are forced to quarantine, that do still not exhibit any symptoms, how can we ensure their continuity of education? When they have to be out for fourteen days, twenty days, whatever it may be?
Yeah, Dr. Pugh has been working with this. We continue to refine our efforts, but I'll let her describe that. We have a new graphic, as soon as we get state approval on that, we'll be glad to share that with the board and the community.
We have a draft. Right now, we've worked collaboratively with the associations and with the principals to, basically, there are, the school would contact the home, work with the family to see what's possible for the student while they are on quarantine, whether or not they have technology available. And then the teacher and the parents would determine which of the three ways they would try to provide continuity of learning. Our three ways are basically, all teachers provide work in the Google Classroom always. So then the way that they can have access to their teacher would be either through a pre-recorded video that's also posted to the classroom, through live streaming, which is just turning the cameras on, or through a mutually agreed-upon time to meet and provide that tutoring instruction.
That is a draft that's not currently in place yet?
Well, what we've got is a soft rollout where we're trying to provide that for students as it happens. They're definitely reaching out and making communication with the parents about what they're choosing to do. The first question is, are they well enough to participate? And if they're well enough to participate, then we're determining what they would participate in. There's not a time limit requirement of having to log in a certain number of minutes, et cetera. The reason it's draft is because there's a draft circulating from the state level about what the requirements are in order to count a student as present for instruction. So we're waiting to make sure that what we put out one hundred percent aligns with that.
And it's my understanding that if they are forced to quarantine, that they do get an excused absence due to this, correct?
Correct, correct.
So but either way, though, we still cannot guarantee that they will have access to the education at this point if they're sent home and still well.
We still are expected to provide access to their education. Currently, the way we are doing it prior to this new draft was that we were providing access just like we would for a student who was on an excused absence for an extended time for a vacation or something else that was approved, by providing the work. And then usually, the teachers would work with the student to get them caught up. This is a little different, in that it's asking us to do it during the time of quarantine so that the students don't get further behind.
Because I know my biggest concern is, and I get we're sending the work home, but we all know that that's not necessarily the actual education that they need. I mean, if they show they know how to do the work, then great, but a lot of times, you need that instruction before you could do the work. And it sounds to me like we're not able to guarantee currently that that's happening.
So.
I know we're trying to, but are we guaranteeing?
And each situation's a little bit unique. Some are saying no, they're not going to participate. No, they can't sit in front of the computer for this long. And others are saying yes, provide the work, we're not sure we understand it. Can you work with the student? Can you meet with them? And a lot of times, what we're seeing is teachers making arrangements to meet individually with the students or even in small groups before or after school or during their planning time. So in terms of a guarantee, our responsibility is to make sure they have access to the teacher, make sure they have access to the resources, and make sure that we're giving them the opportunity to complete the work.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are any other questions, that, Mr. Prue, I think you've got one other announcement tonight.
I was going to say, there was one more item just to probably announce for, and this is really more for our community that has children in ages five to eleven. Washington County Schools has been in consultation and in organization with the county health department and also with Meredith Health in preparation for vaccinations that will be able to be administered to those levels of students. What we are simply going to be producing in the next week or so is a survey to families to help Meredith gauge the interest in families in having their children vaccinated and when they would want to do that, times of days, and where they would want to do that. At this point, there's no movement on the part of the school system to say that this is a mandate on the part of the school system. This is really just assisting the Meredith Health System and finding information from our families. So our community should expect to receive that in the next week or so, if you have children registered in the school system that are ages five to eleven.
And just to be clear, Mr. Prue, we're not providing any names, any information directly to Meredith or the health department, just simply raw numbers. You know, a thousand parents responded, that they have two thousand children.
Survey.
And where they'd want to do it, and what time of day, and that type of thing.
Correct.
Washington County doesn't, you know, endorse one way or the other the vaccine. We believe that's something between parents and their doctors. But we do want to assist here in the community health as much as we can. Okay, all right, thank you.
I have one question, I'm sorry. How does our plan, this new quarantining updating plan, compare with other counties that you know in Maryland?
Our new quarantining plan?
Yeah, I mean, I believe our, a lot of counties are not allowing kids to take part in sports, and we are, correct?
Right, so I mean, we're probably as, I don't know if liberal is the right word, but trying to be as, trying to let as many opportunities for students to continue as possible. I'm not aware of other counties that have allowed homecoming. We've had homecoming. I'm not aware of other counties, I think for the exception of one, that if, where they do have choice to quarantine or not quarantine, most of them are not allowing students to return to do athletics or extracurricular activities. We are allowing children to return to those activities. And all these things, we're going to continue to monitor and see how they go. I'm aware of Carroll, Frederick, St. Mary's, Harford.
Caroline.
Caroline are the four or five other counties that I'm aware of that have deviated from the state guidance at this point, along with Washington County. So the majority of counties are still very strict with the setup that we had earlier, which was following our own health department. Our health department's not a hundred percent in agreement with us. Of course, they're always going to err on the side of caution. We're just trying to find that balance of caution, to keep our students safe, keep our staff safe, keep our communities safe, but also to keep well students in school the very best we can. So we'll continue to monitor this. We might have to continue to make adjustments. You know, if we suddenly see a huge increase, and we believe we're the source of that, we'll have to make adjustments and change things. But I think this is a big step forward. I think we're going to see a significant reduction in the number of close contacts that are allowed to attend school as opposed to being excluded from school. So we're hopeful that that's a good sign. Today was the first time Washington County has touched eight percent. I think we're still close to nine percent in twenty-six days. So we're keeping our fingers crossed and hope that at some point, you know, state average today, Mr. Prue, was three something?
Three point four, I believe, in change.
I mean, if we could get down into that range, we would virtually have almost no one quarantined or identified as a close contact. Right now, we're still very high.
It seems like our case rates are declining. There is sort of a tick down in the number of cases per hundred thousand in the county. And tangentially, I shared with Dr. Michael around lunchtime today that it does seem over the last three or four days, compared to, you know, a Friday to a Tuesday over the last several weeks. to, you know, a Friday to a Tuesday over the last several weeks, that our numbers of individually posted to the dashboard has declined. So I think we're seeing some positive movement and hoping that the number continues to fall.
Continue to need everyone's cooperation to make that happen.
Do you have an idea of how many students have been quarantined throughout the year or through?
Eleven, 1,200 is what's off the top of my head, but I think that number's from early last week.
Yeah. I, I want to say it's 1,250 pushing 1,300. I, I can get a number for the board members. We can put that maybe in the Friday update this week.
How many of those kids have, do we know of that tested positive? I'm pretty sure we're not keeping track of those stats, which, you know, my question, but.
I don't think we have a way to keep a real accurate assessment of that, but we are thinking it's less than 10% of those students are showing up with COVID. So that's why we're trying, trying this to, you know, hopefully nine out of 10, maybe more than that, 95 out of 100, won't contract COVID-19. And that's why we're trying this to try again to keep more students in the classroom.
And I think the tricky part of that assessment as well is, you know, do we, are we sure that someone was a close contact here may not have also contracted somewhere else? So whether it's, you know, they're also at Little League, they're wherever. And tangentially, you know, our, we've had reports from staff that have gone into community locations to, let's say, deliver homework or what have you, and the quarantine students are in the neighborhood playing together with the infected student. So it's not always happening here. So even if we could generate a number, we couldn't be sure. It definitely would be unscientific.
Right, right. So I, I will say that I do appreciate you trying to lessen the amount of quarantine. It is, it's one of my biggest concerns, especially with the, the struggles we had that are carrying through from last year still. You know, with the amount of education that these kids are missing, I do really worry that any unnecessary quarantine is, is, is going to be a big problem for these kids, not just for the rest of this year, but for their, the rest of their schooling careers and beyond. So, and especially because we cannot guarantee right now that the education is going to be continued during this quarantine process, I would like to make a motion that we enact an emergency policy to not quarantine students who fail to exhibit symptoms of COVID-19. And furthermore, under no circumstances will WCPS require proof of COVID-19 vaccination for students and staff until the standard five-year minimum timeline for FDA vaccine approval has been met.
I second that.
I see the motion, please.
Can't, like, read it again.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm not seeing the motion. I'm seeing, I'm seeing other things.
Oh. It's at the bottom of that page there, the last two. I kind of shortened what I actually wrote down.
I'm seeing.
May be resolved that WCPS will not quarantine.
Okay, so the motion is that WCPS enact an emergency policy to not quarantine students who fail to exhibit symptoms of COVID-19. That's the first part.
Correct.
And the second part is that under no circumstances will WCPS require proof of COVID-19 vaccination for students and staff until the standard five-year minimum timeline for FDA vaccine approval has been met.
Correct.
Discussion? Questions?
I would ask this. What do we do? Because, well, I can't say it because of where, where we talked about it today, but what do we do if this, what do we do if this comes down to this thing that Biden is trying to push that companies with 100 or more employees will have to force them to get the vaccination? I'm against mandated vaccinations, but what do we do if it's, you're saying under no circumstances? What is our strategy or our playbook then if, if that comes down? And you'll recall, you know what I'm talking about?
I know exactly what you're talking about. And that's, I mean, it's a very valid question. I mean, as of right now, the, the mandate is that staff will have the option to get tested. If they don't want to get vaccinated, I want to make sure that students and staff, and quite frankly, especially the students I'm worried about, but if, I want to make sure that there's still the option to get tested to be able to carry out your job function and your day-to-day student activities. So I just want to make sure that there's nothing extra put in place. I, and I will say that there has never been any talk about that as far as I'm aware, but I just want to make sure that, like I said, with everything that's come down the pike, what we're seeing in neighboring counties like Montgomery where people are being required to do that, I just want to make sure that our staff and our students have the ability to get tested if that is.
To me, first of all, I don't think we should try to implant here in Washington County what's happening in other school districts around, around the state or the nation and so forth, because this is, you can't compare Washington County to Montgomery County or to certain counties in Virginia and this type of thing. So again, I've said I'm against mandated vaccinations, but I think we have to have a policy. I think, I think that would have to be studied. To me, to come up with a policy and details and stuff, I think that would have to be, go before the policy committee would be my recommendation and so forth. Since it's being sprung on us here without any aforementioned notice, I mean, you know.
That's a concern for me also. You know, we have as part of our board norms that we have no surprises. And to have this sprung at this time without any opportunity to do the necessary research, to do, you know, to have the informal discussions, I just, this just leaves me with a bad feeling, quite frankly. I feel blindsided by this, quite honestly.
I, and I don't blame you. I understand. And, and like I said, I didn't realize that the quarantine update was going to happen this quickly. I thought we would have an option to discuss it.
Did we not have an email to that effect?
We didn't. I thought it was.
That this was going to be presented to the?
I thought that, we did, but I thought, I was expecting it to happen this week after a discussion today. So maybe I misunderstood something or misread something, which I do apologize for. But like I said, I, I applaud Dr. Michael for making the, making this update happen. I do not believe that it goes far enough. And I think that we need to do what we can to make sure healthy kids are in school. If they do exhibit symptoms, then yes, we need to send them home. But it, if a healthy kid is healthy, then we should allow them to be in school. And I also want to make sure that we do not require proof of vaccine status as well.
So my question would be, and again, I don't, this would be something that I would ask a health official. At what point does a healthy kid exhibit symptoms after having been exposed?
And that, I mean, they do have the list right now. There's currently that list if a kid is exhibiting symptoms. Correct me if I'm wrong. There's currently a list that if a kid is exhibiting those symptoms, then he can currently be sent home even without this motion.
Correct.
So we would just follow that list.
Any further questions, discussion?
If I could just make a comment. I mean, at no time have we ever discussed, or I've ever discussed, or staff has ever discussed mandating vaccines for children or staff.
Right.
Just to be 100% clear on that.
Right.
If it comes from the federal government or someplace beyond our control, that's something different. But we have never. I have never, I've said this several times, I'm not in favor of mandating. That is something between parents, children, and their doctor, their physician, whatever about the vaccines. So just, just to be clear on that. You don't need to do this for my purposes.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with anything that was discussed before. This is from what we're, what I've saw.
And part of the reason we went ahead and implemented the change on Thursday, I guess it was, was to take advantage of children not being in school Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We just thought it was a good opportunity, it was right timing for, to make this change, which is significant. And we're still at a high transmittal rate, so I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned if we go to, by the time you're symptomatic, you probably, and I do not know this for a fact, you've probably already had COVID for several days. And I'm just concerned with almost a 9% positivity rate right now, we will drive this up and we might lose the opportunity to even do what I've suggested at this point. So if we become the super spreader site of Washington County, I, I just don't want this to derail the effort that we made so far, would be my thought.
And I, and it's a very valid point. And by no means, I don't, I don't want to make it look like I'm, you know, not worried at all about COVID. I know many people who have died. I know many people who almost died. I personally had it and I'm vaccinated. But it, like I said, that's part of the reason why I asked that question, you know, do we know how many students are being, are testing positive after the close contact? And I, and again, I have, I don't have the science behind it because no one does. We're not keeping track of it. And I would be willing to guess that if there was a high transmission rate in the schools, then that, that list would, that data would be kept so that the public could be made aware of it. And since it's not, I'm going to assume that if there is any, it is negligible at best.
Right. And I think because we've probably been overly cautious is why we haven't seen that spread. So where is that that we throttle back to? And we, you know, there's a reason we're one of, whatever it is, five or six counties that have made this change. And 18 or 19 other counties have not made this change. They are sticking by the very strict rules, which are probably, you know, too strict and are quarantining too many people. I just hate to see us go too far with that. But that's, you know, that's certainly up to the board. We're, we're glad to do whatever the board suggests.
Dr. Michael, I appreciate your comments, and I would want to proceed cautiously knowing what our community rates are, knowing what circumstances are in Washington County. And for that reason, I will be voting in opposition to the motion. Is there any further discussion? Any questions?
Mrs. Williams, could I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Evans, related to his motion?
Absolutely.
And the, on the, the chance that it could pass, I want to make sure that staff has clarity. What I think I heard is asking for no proof of vaccination.
Correct.
But if, but then if, if we had to get into a vaccinate or testing requirement, my only concern is for staff that have to track that to comply, let's say, with a federal requirement, how would we know who's supposed to test if, if folks are not providing proof of vaccination?
And that's why I said require. If someone wants to offer it, then so be it.
But I, but I, if the rule is, which I think is what I'm hearing from news sources, that the requirement would be you have to be vaccinated or you have to test.
Right.
Someone could not vaccinate and not test, and we wouldn't know because we would just assume they're vaccinated, but they didn't provide proof of, I, I just want to, trying to think through some logistics that staff's going to run into in that process.
And I'm just saying that we will not require. So if I'm vaccinated and I don't want to show the proof for, for whatever reason, then, then I have to go test.
Okay. Fair enough. That's the clarification needed.
Any further questions, any further discussion? So we're voting on Mr. Evans' motion, Mr. Gessford's second. All those in favor of the motion?
Can we read it again first, please? Just so I can hear it one more time.
So, just so I'm clear, we're saying that this is an emergency policy, not quarantine students who fail to exhibit symptoms.
Correct. And I will add too, that part of the policy that gives us the authority to do this says that the policy only lasts for six months, at which point we then have the ability to let it run out or vote on it again, go through the normal process that you spoke about earlier. So this will only go in place for six months. And then if it carries through within six months, we have to come back and discuss it again.
And that we won't require proof of vaccine from anybody?
Correct.
Besides the vaccination, how's this different than what Dr. Michael is implementing?
So if a kid is not exhibiting symptoms, like on the school bus, for example, if a kid wasn't wearing his mask properly, and the kid's on the school bus and he's still not exhibiting symptoms, then he's still able to be in school the next day, if that makes sense.
Okay. So if for some reason there wasn't a mask?
Or, right, or if they're in the, in phys ed, in the gym, or if they're in the cafeteria.
So the only part that's really different is that we're not going to require proof of vaccination.
And like I said about, it, it, it goes a little further. And like I said, Dr. Michael's, it's, I don't know how different it is, but really the big thing is for the quarantine, the kids that are in the cafeteria that aren't wearing their masks and they're too close to someone for 15 minutes, then as long as they're still healthy, they're still going to be able to come into school the next day.
I think if I, because Mr. Prue heads our team, I think I hear you saying it would be totally optional for every parent, for every child, no matter the circumstances. As long as the child's not symptomatic, they could choose to come to school.
Correct.
Is that what you're?
No, no, not at all. When we have students that are close contact and not masked, so, you know, boy, I hate to start down this trail, but I've been very, very clear and people have misquoted me 100 times, so you can misquote me again. When I said a game changer was when CDC came out with, if you are masked in the classroom and you're three feet apart, you do not need to be quarantined. That was huge for us. And that was why I went to masking a week before the state required us to go to masking. As far as I know, all 24 jurisdictions, including the seed school, are all still masked as a result of the state MSD and Health Department ruling on masks. But the game changer was that three feet, because we do not have the space in Washington County to be six feet apart in a classroom. We do have room to be three feet apart, even in the biggest of classrooms, pretty much. What we've done since Thursday is we're close contact because we're on the bus and we're within, I mean, the bus was two seats in front, two seats behind, and a seat directly across, and a seat in front and behind that. So we were quarantining on a crowded bus if students were on there for 15 minutes, somewhere between six, eight, 10, 12 kids. With this new ruling, if children are properly masked, it would be the option of the parent to quarantine or not. With what's being shared tonight, if the children weren't properly masked, there's a better chance it would spread. And as long as they're healthy, for the time period they're healthy, they would not be quarantined, is what I hear in this motion. So I think, Mr. Prue, I think it would be basically, until you're sick, it's totally the parent's option whether to come or not. And I think by the time you exhibit those symptoms, I'm just concerned at almost 9% positivity, we're going to derail the very thing we just put in place Thursday that could be saving us 1,000 quarantines a month. If this turns around and just flips on us and has more kids with COVID. So I just, I just offer that caution.
Any other questions? Are we ready to move to the vote?
Well, I would say, may I?
Absolutely.
I would say this. One, I think the motion needs more study. Two, I'd like to remind my fellow board members that this is a collegial, collegial. my fellow board members that this is a collegial, collegial group of people sitting up here. And I don't personally like being blindsided by things like this that come up just on the spur of the moment. That could have easily been brought up earlier in closed session so that we could have had a discussion about it, made sure we understood it. Suddenly, boom, it's out here. So it's not so much that I'm maybe opposed to the emergency legislation or, or policy, but under the circumstances, the way it's been, been come up, I know when I fought against something, which I won't mention many months ago, I let the board know ahead of time. I let the board president know ahead of time. And Mr. Gessford was my ally at that time on that issue and so forth. But the board knew ahead of time about that issue, that I was going to move to amend the agenda that night to remove that certain issue from the agenda and so forth. So I'm not lecturing you, Darrell, but in the future, I hope you, you know, you've been around all day. I wish you would have said something earlier. Sorry.
I move for the vote.
All those in favor of Mr. Evans' motion, raise their hand, please. Okay, we have two affirmative votes, those opposed, three opposed, abstaining. Big member concurs with the affirmative, with the opposed votes, correct. Motion fails for lack of four votes. Okay, at this time, we'll move to personnel actions. Thank you very much. And I'm assuming you were finished, but thank, thank you. We'll move to personnel actions. Dr. Pugh.
Good evening. As discussed earlier today in closed session, there are a number of staff changes for your consideration. And at this time, I ask for your approval of the personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the personnel actions dated Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, as presented in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions for Dr. Pugh? Any discussion? All those in favor. All right, so we have five affirmative votes. Motion carries. Thank you. We have approval. Okay, we'll move to reports to the board. Board member committee reports. Dr. Zemeyer, would you like to begin down there?
The next curriculum and instruction meeting is here in November 15th at 1:30.
Thank you, Dr. Zemeyer. Mr. Evans?
For the finance committee, we were going to meet this Friday, but since the audit just finished up, we're going to push that back when there's some more budget items that need to be discussed. We're going to push that back till maybe a little closer Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Has there been an email sent out for that? Because that's the first I knew we were canceling.
That was, oh, we literally just talked about that about 10 minutes ago. Jeff and I did.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, I didn't even think of this. Sorry about that.
So that'll be in November?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Gessford is no longer here. Mr. Bickford, policy?
A policies meeting next Tuesday at 11:30 here in this room.
Okay, thank you. So that's it for board member committee reports. Mr. Gupta, do you have anything that you would like to report from student government?
I have nothing I'd like to report.
All righty. Thank you very much. We'll move to miscellaneous business. Per usual, we have one item of miscellaneous business, and that is future agenda items. You should have a list. So putting forth as future agenda items, we have the following. On November 2nd, there will be a report on teacher recruitment, hiring, and the teacher induction academy. On November 16th, a report on student enrollment and free and reduced meals eligibility rates. December 7th is the reorganization meeting, the election of the president, the election of the vice president of the board. Also that evening, we'll have a report on the 2022, 2023 middle and high school program of studies. And then on December 21st, our last meeting of the year, we will have the superintendent's draft fiscal year 2023 budget on the agenda. This is just a reminder to put on your calendar, if you haven't already, that on November 9th at 9:00 AM, we have a joint meeting with Washington County delegation to the Maryland General Assembly, and that's at HCC. That's what we have coming up for future agenda items. We'll move now to board member comments. Mr. Gupta, would you like to begin?
Yes, I'm proud to see the expansion of tech hype with programs such as the diesel one, and with the purchasing of the right materials like the one over there, and in order to make sure that all students can get a great education in WCPS and get great jobs in the workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford?
I too appreciated the presentation. I'm very excited about the advancements in the tech program. And I, I wanted to say, we had a wonderful conference at MAB, and I appreciated our president's chairing of that event. It was very successful, and it was good to hear from our colleagues. One of the themes that did come out that I wanted to mention earlier is that importance of mental health. And I would just encourage you, the, the person that spoke this evening about mental health, I'd also ask you to read the same thing to the county commissioners. I know that we have asked for increased funding every year, and that often is to, to pay for additional counseling. And previous years, when we have not gotten our requests, we have been not able to fund additional counselors. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Staff?
Uh.
Excuse me.
I would ditto what Mr. Bickford just said about the county commissioners. And I will also say this. Please write this number down, 301-991-5388. That's my cell number. If any of you wish to have a discussion with me about issues and so forth, I'll be more than glad to have a conversation with you. 301-991-5388. If I don't answer, leave a message. Please clearly identify yourself. My hearing's a little bad, especially in the right ear and so forth. So I will talk to you about issues. I wasn't going to say this, but when I got back from New Hampshire, my son and I go up there, started three years ago. He's quite an outdoorsman. He's an adult son. He's 39. But we started going up to a place that I love in extreme northern New Hampshire. Anyway, long story short, got back, I was told by a board member to listen to the public comment and so forth of the last meeting and this type of thing. And I had to chuckle to myself because it was probably the first time in my adult life that I got the idea that people think I'm a radical leftist about certain issues and so forth. I said something to a friend of mine, and a friend of mine said, longtime friend of 50 years, said, "Do these people really know you?" I said, "No, I don't think so." They said, "Do they know some of your viewpoints on contemporary issues?" I said, "No, I don't think so." So I'll have a discussion with you and so forth about it. And I'll say this again. What we're trying to do this year in this county is we are trying to have as normal a school year as is possible so that we don't have a repeat of what the governor and other people in this state presented us with and all the boards of education over 2020. We're trying to have as normal a school year. I go to athletic events when I can. And I will say this, I was at a homecoming breakfast at Williamsport High School, where I spent 41 years of my life. I circulated, ate the pancakes and stuff, circulated for about an hour and a half. And I hate to say this, but no one came up to me and said, because some, they went by and they said, "Hi Stan, hi Mr. Stafford," depending on how well they thought they knew me and this type of thing. And no one came up to me and said, "Stan, Mr. Stafford, you got to unmask the kids." And there were a lot of parents there. So I don't know how to take that. You know, you all come here and you've got the First Amendment right, and I respect that because I speak out also, as you well know. And you, you come in here, I don't know if you represent a majority of the county or not. Maybe you do, maybe you don't. I don't have any basis for deciding that. I can only know what, when I go to the athletic events, nobody comes up to me and talks about masking and so forth. So I'm not belittling that or anything. I'm just saying, we're trying to have a normal school year. Please help us carry that out to this. Hopefully someday, COVID will be removed from the vocabulary. All right? I hope it comes at some point. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
He asked for your number again.
301-991-5388. And again, if I don't answer, leave a message because I don't always carry my phone. If I go out to dinner with my wife, I leave it in the console of the car. If I'm working in New York, I don't have the phone. If I'm exercising, I don't have the phone. So leave a message, okay? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
That's bold, giving out your number like that. I appreciate that. Obviously, I'm disappointed the way that vote went today, but I also do respect and appreciate all the comment as well. I know I sprung that up on, on people. And I, the reason why I didn't bring it up earlier is because I didn't feel it would be appropriate to, to, to do that outside of an open meeting or whatever, like, like you said, in closed session, I did not feel as though that would be appropriate. So again, I, I understand why everyone voted the way they did. I know it was controversial, and I, my goal was not necessarily, was definitely not to put, you know, any pressure on anyone or anything. It was because I truly believe that this is what is best for the kids, and that's why there's seven of us. So I, again, I appreciate and respect the vote that, that happened tonight. And I guess the, the last thing I, I wanted to bring up tonight was last, I think it was last meeting, maybe a meeting before that, there's a young lady who came up and wanted to know about, have access, I guess, to the text and everything like that. And I know it's not easy to, to be able to do that. We talked about the licensing issues and, you know, how, how does that, that work? I, I would hope that sometime in the near future, we could figure out how if a parent would like to see the curriculum, or maybe it's already available, that hopefully we could make that more accessible for a parent to be able to go and find what is actually in the curriculum, what's being taught to their kids.
I think Dr. Willough was able to assist that person last time, but I mean, we're, we're glad to set up any, any type of review or anything anybody would like to come in and see.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zemeyer.
Thank you for coming tonight. It's always good to hear everyone's perspectives. And without input from the community, we don't have that. We all have one teacher, at least hopefully, that has made a huge impact on our lives. Mine was Gwen Freeman. She was my 11th grade English teacher at South High. And had it not been for her, I'd be a math teacher. I remember two pieces of advice clearly that she gave me. The first was, "If you hate English so much, why don't you become an English teacher and make it fun for your students?" Hopefully, I did that. The second was from Thomas Paine. She said, "Tis the business of little minds to shrink, but he whose heart is firm and whose conscience approves his conduct will pursue his principles unto death." I still ponder this, especially in my capacity as a board member. To those teachers who are crafting lessons every day despite the pandemic to guide our students beyond today and into tomorrow, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Zemeyer. As Mr. Bickford said, Mrs. Murray and he and I were at the MAB conference in Annapolis last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And one of the highlights for me was a session that Dr., I'm sorry, Mr. Superintendent Choudry, the state superintendent of schools, and Mr. Clarence Crawford, who is the president of the State Board of Education, spoke with the members of boards of education and opened themselves up to questions from all of us. And one of the things that I was impressed with that came from the state superintendent, when talking about the blueprint for Maryland's future, something that we have all talked about with a great deal of concern, he said, and he said this repeatedly, "We're going to get this right. We're going to get this right. It's a wonderful opportunity for the students in Maryland, and we're going to get this right." So I just wanted to share that with you. So if there's no further business, Dr. Michael, if you have nothing further, then we'll adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.